Good evening. I'd like to call this July 23, 2018, special meeting of the University Heights City Council to order. Mr. McConville, will you take the role?
Mr. Rock.
Here.
Mr. Weisman.
Here.
Mr. Sims.
Here.
Mrs. Pardee.
Here.
Mr. Erdl.
Present.
Mrs. Weiss.
Here.
Is there a motion to excuse Mr. Erdl?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
I'll take the motion by Mr. Weisman and the second by Mrs. Pardee.
Oh, no.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. McConville, will you call the role? Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mr. Weisman.
Aye.
Mr. Sims.
Aye.
Mrs. Pardee.
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
Okay, since this is a special meeting, we proceed immediately to the agenda. There are no -- there is no open forum, there are no mayoral remarks or taking of action, there is no -- there are no reports of directors or of committee -- committees of council. So, the first item on the agenda is Ordinance 2018-33 implementing sections 37, 35, 65 through 37, 35, 70 of the Ohio Revised Code establishing and describing the boundaries of a community reinvestment area in the city of University Heights, Ohio, designating a housing officer to administer the program, and creating a community reinvestment housing council and a tax incentive review council. This is on second reading. The sponsor of this legislation is Councilwoman Michelle Weiss. Mrs. Weiss, would you like to speak on your legislation?
Sure. I mean, we've went through this a number of times in the committee meetings and on the first reading, but basically what this does is make the entire city something called a community reinvestment area, a CRA. The state of Ohio has already approved our draft, and what this will do is any additions to current homes will get a 15-year tax abatement, and anything -- and that's above $25,000, anything below $25,000 will get a 10-year tax abatement.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Mr. McConville, I know you have some things to add. I just want to clarify how that works a little bit. The tax abatement that homeowners or developers who are building new construction will be eligible for is not necessarily a dollar-to-dollar tax abatement as it relates to their expenditure. What I mean by that is if a homeowner spends, let's say, $75,000 on an addition, they are eligible for a 15-year tax abatement at 100 percent. But the 100 percent relates only to the extent to which the improvements increase the assessed valuation of the home. So if, as a result of the $75,000 investment, the home increases in value by $25,000, it's that $25,000 increase in value on which the abatement attaches. I just want to make that clear. Does that raise more questions, or does that ... So, in other words, you're not going to get a $25,000 abatement for $25,000 of investment unless that happens to be the corresponding increase in your assessed valuation. The other thing I want to clarify, just because I think there's been perhaps a little bit of confusion about, is the extent to which abatements are retroactive. Abatements are retroactive so long as the project to which they relate is completed, which is to say there's a final inspection by our building department after passage of this ordinance. So any project that's already been built prior to passage of the ordinance is not going to be eligible for abatement. But if there's a problem -- excuse me, a project that's ongoing right now that is completed after passage of this ordinance, it hypothetically could be eligible for abatement.
So, when we spoke last time, in the last meeting, I thought we said that anything in 2018, because nothing really gets assessed until the year after. So let's say something completed last month hypothetically, so wouldn't that be considered?
That would not be eligible. There's a specific statutory provision that indicates that completion of the project must occur after passage of the ordinance.
Okay, so that's a new -- that's a nuance that we didn't -- wasn't clarified.
Right, correct. And if I understand, that's something that is not within our control, that's part of state law. That's part of state law. Okay, okay. Is there any further discussion or questions with regard to Mr. Rock?
I do have a question. Now, I understand what you were saying about the assessed value and how the county handles that, but on this ordinance, section four, part A through E, it really talks about the cost of the remodeling. So...
The cost of the remodeling is essential for eligibility. So I spend $25,000, I'm now eligible to apply for tax abatement, but my abatement is only going to be on the extent of the increase in my assessed value.
So where I would get confused is if I put a $30,000 addition on my home and the county assessed it as an increase in value of maybe $10,000, would that put me in a different bracket?
No, the -- no, you're eligible, by virtue of spending the $25,000, you're eligible for the 100 percent abatement and increased assessed value for 15 years.
Based on the cost of the construction?
Correct.
The cost of the construction is what would put you in the particular bracket?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And it's probably worth, just for clarification, noting that that increase in value has to be due to the reinvestment that occurs, as opposed to some other reason. Right, so, right, it -- you wouldn't get abatement just because you happen to build an improvement onto your home that corresponded with the county's sexennial reappraisal of every home in the county. We know that the county's going to be releasing results soon, which indicate countywide whether homes in any particular municipality went up or down in value by a percentage. Those amounts that the county determines are not relevant to a particular project. Okay. Yes, Mrs. Pardee.
This is exciting, thank you, Mrs. Weiss, and will mean a lot, I think, to the residents, but even among us, it may be a little hard to completely understand. Is there a plan for the administration to create an FAQ and post this prominently so that people, A, know that they need to take out a permit to -- or whatever the process is to get this, and B, have examples so they can understand a little better whether or not they're eligible and what it means for them?
Yes, I think that would be a good idea, and I think that may be done after. I know there's going to be a procedure that Mr. McConville and Mr. Grogan Myers are going to be undertaking as far as steps after this evening, assuming passage this evening. Mr. McConville, would you briefly describe what the procedure is from here post-passage of this ordinance? Sure, sure. So, the next step for the city is to submit its formal application to the state to have the state review the application and declare the city to be a community reinvestment area. That application will consist of the housing survey, which we've already provided to the state to make sure that it was adequate for their purposes, along with several other categories of information that the state requires. That includes things like our zoning map and some of our census data. I think that realistically, we should be able to get that application submitted to the state within a week or two. It won't be too labor-intensive. And once the state receives our application, they have 30 days in which to approve it or deny it. I don't anticipate any reason for its denial, but, you know, of course, we'll have to wait and see. But once the state approves, then we are eligible to act on any applications that may be submitted. Thank you. Mrs. Pardee.
But approval for any project is based upon our approving if we approve tonight, not the state's approval 30 days from now?
Correct, that's right.
Good, thank you.
Okay.
So I just had one other question.
Mrs. Weiss, please, go ahead.
No.
Yes.
Because Councilwoman Pardee just said something. So, we have a lot of projects going on right now throughout the city, so if they don't have their final inspection, they are still eligible to...
Yes.
...apply for this.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, very good. Are there any further comments, questions about this proposed legislation?
Nope.
All right. Very good. Before we take the vote, I would just like to say that this is something that, for the last year, I've been discussing with residents, and I know that there is a desire for this, an interest in this. And when it comes to our overall strategy to improve our housing stock here in the city, this is, I believe, one of several key things that we are doing here in University Heights to strengthen our housing stock for the long term. And I believe that for people who feel like they're outgrowing their homes or considering moving to gain upgraded living space, that we have found a way to help make it worth their while to stay. So, if there's nothing further, we'll take the role first on declaring an emergency. Oh, yes, we need a motion. Thank you.
I'll move to pass ordinance 2018-33 implementing sections 37, 35.65 through 37, 35.70 of the Ohio Revised Code, establishing and describing the boundaries of a community reinvestment area in the city of University Heights.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilwoman Weiss, second by Councilwoman Cameron. Is there any discussion on the motion? Mr. Weisman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank Councilwoman Weiss since we first started talking about this. Her pursuit of this idea has been dogged, and we really are benefiting from that.
Certainly.
I'd also like to thank Mr. Grogan Myers and the administration. It's nice to have a mayor who sees a good idea and says, "Hey, that's a good idea, let's try to do that." And I think this is exactly the way that council's supposed to work, and we're seeing now that it's something we're able to do that I think is going to help people want to build their houses and stay here and help the city.
Thank you, Mr. Weisman. I, too, would also like to thank Councilwoman Weiss for her work and dedication on this issue. I'd like to thank Mr. McConville for helping us navigate this thus far and going forward, and also to Mr. Grogan Myers for his work on this, on the housing survey and other aspects of this legislation and this overall program, both up to this point and going forward. Is there anything further on this motion? Okay, then, this is on emergency, so first, we need to take a role on the suspension of the rules. Well, we -- so I want to clarify that... Oh, no, I'm sorry, this is on emergency, excuse me. It is, it is on emergency, but it's not on suspension of rules. So let me just go over the difference between the two one more time. Suspension of rules is that our charter requires that an ordinance be read twice before it can be voted on. In this case, this is our second reading, so we are complying with the charter provision for two readings, and therefore, we don't need to suspend our reading rule because we're complying with it.
Oh, we did.
That is distinct from an emergency ordinance, and an emergency ordinance can be an ordinance that's read once or twice. In either case, an emergency ordinance becomes effective immediately upon its passage, whereas an ordinance that is not an emergency ordinance does not become effective until 30 days after its passage. Okay. So that's the distinction. Okay, and then for further clarification, while this is on emergency, but on a second reading as well, do we need five to pass, or four? We need five to pass on emergency. Very good. All right, well then, if there is no further discussion, Mr. McConville, will you call the role on the main motion? Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mr. Weisman.
Aye.
Mr. Sims.
Aye.
Mrs. Pardee.
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
Yes, yes.
Very good. The ordinance therefore passes and is on emergency, so it is implemented effective immediately. Next item is item B, Resolution 2018-35, adopting the alternative 2018 tax budget on emergency. And if I may introduce to all of you our new finance director, Mr. James Patrick Goff II. James, Mr. Goff, you have the floor.
My apologies, I was mistaken as to the start time. I thought by 7:30 for some reason.
That's quite all right.
So we have the alternative tax budget here presented for council. Essentially, what the tax budget process does is starts the annual process for doing the appropriate, leading all the way to the appropriations. Kind of historically, it was very important for making sure that the property taxes were assessed and that you weren't collecting excess revenue from year to year and not spending money down. Being largely income tax-driven, it really is more of a formality at this point for us in terms of getting the property tax rate set. It starts the process where the budget commission will review ours as well as everybody else's tax budgets. They will officially set what the rates should be. It'll eventually come back to council to adopt those rates for property taxes for next year, and then we start rolling at that point probably into our regular budget process. And so, at this point, it really is a kind of broad scheme blueprint. The numbers absolutely will change between this and when we get to our budget at the start of the year. The numbers, so that I have some kind of a starting place to go off of, are largely driven by the kind of average of the last five years for most of the expense and revenue, and the property tax numbers are more correlated with last year's property tax collections since that's the part of the purpose of the tax budget. If there are any questions, I'd definitely entertain those at this time.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Goff? Well, if there are no questions, is there a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we pass Resolution 2018-35, adopting the alternative 2018 tax budget on emergency.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilwoman Weismar Pardee. Is there a second by Councilman Weisman? Is there any discussion on the motion? Well, then we will proceed to vote first on the suspension of the rules. Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mr. Weisman.
Aye.
Mr. Sims.
Aye.
Mrs. Pardee.
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
And then on the main motion. Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mr. Weisman.
Aye.
Mr. Sims.
Aye.
Mrs. Pardee.
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
Okay, motion, resolution passes. Okay, next on the agenda is item C, Ordinance 2018-36, amending codified ordinance section 432.08 entitled Driving Within Lanes or Continuous Lines of Traffic for the Purpose of Regulating the Operation of Motor Vehicle in Any On-Street Path, Lane, Trail, or Multipurpose Lane Designated by Official Signs or Markings for the Exclusive Use of Bicycles or Other Non-Motorized Modes of Transportation. This is on emergency. Mr. Grogan Myers, would you care to speak on this ordinance, and feel free to bring up the next one as well?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, before you, are two ordinances that are coupled together in a sense that, as you recall, a couple of years ago now, we had applied for mid-block crosswalks in Warrensville, so helping to aid pedestrian traffic crossing Warrensville between those long blocks between the light here at Washington and Meadowbrook, and then between Meadowbrook and Fairmount Circle. As part of that, we had included that we would install or paint bike lanes, the stretch of Warrensville between Cedar and Fairmount Circle. Finally, we are at this point now where we are finishing up the design and all the necessary work with this engineer and ODOT, and so this package of legislation deals with how cars can and cannot use the bike lanes. Namely, you can't drive in them, and you can't park in them. So this is gearing up for the build-out of this project. So there is one exception that the mayor was noting this morning, is that bikes, or I'm sorry, buses are allowed to pull into the bike lanes to access the necessary bus stops along their route, obviously taking the necessary caution as they're pulling into and out of the bike lanes.
Very good. Are there any questions? Mr. Grogan Myers.
I have a question.
Mr. Sims. Councilman Sims.
So this means, or does it mean, in each direction on Warrensville Center Road between Cedar and Fairmount, there will be how many lanes?
There will be one bike -- how many car lanes? Car lanes, the two lanes each direction will be maintained.
Okay. And then, my second question is relating to how do we inform the public that riding in a bike lane is illegal?
So upon passage, there, I would imagine there will be a large marketing campaign soon to follow. This is not a new concept for the Cleveland area, but certainly something new for the city, so we need to make sure residents and visitors are aware.
Right, and I'm not sure that, I mean, I see, like you just stated, I see bike lanes all over the county, but I'm not sure that people necessarily know that if a vehicle goes into a bike lane, that it's illegal. So I would hope that we could at least put up some type of signage that would support educating folks about it being illegal to ride in a bike lane, and I just think that that's important for us to do.
Well, I think that, Mr. Sims, I think that's a good point, and I think that we should look at additional signage. Maybe, Mr. Chuni, we could make note of that as well, to make clear. For instance, at the mid-block crossings, there will be signs that say that you are to yield to pedestrians, and I think similarly, some signage with respect to how bike lanes are to be respected by motorists would be appropriate here as well. Mr. Grogan Myers, one thing, I think this has been covered in previous meetings, but the mid-block crossings, what was NOAACA's role in the mid-block crossings?
NOAACA initially did the study, the Transportation for Livable Communities Study of Cedar and Warrensville, looking at both roads for ways to make them more multimodal friendly, meaning buses, bikes, pedestrians, and vehicles. So how can we make sure that the street is promoting any and all types of active or passive transportation? And so this was a recommendation, and it came out of the TLCI Plan that is available on our website for review, and they were also the awarding body for the grant funding that we procured to build out this project.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Grogan Myers. Are there any further questions? Councilman Rock.
We have a question. For the runners in the room who use bike paths as their safe means of transport, will a runner be allowed to use the bike path if they're in the correct travel direction? Because it does say in here that it's for exclusive use of bicycles and non-motorized transportation.
Yes. That's a great question.
I just know runners do use them because it's safe, and sidewalks are trip hazards.
Yes.
Especially when you're going at a speed of seven to eight miles an hour. So I could show you the marks in which I've fallen on sidewalks, so I just want to make sure that we can be clear and convey that message to runners that can also use our city's bike paths.
Well, if I may, in section one, would amend local ordinance 452.03 to reserve the on-street path, lane, trail, or multipurpose lane for the exclusive use of bicycles or other non-motorized modes of transportation. I would, I would read that to mean that somebody who is running would fall under that.
That's what I would, that's the way I want to make sure.
I don't know, Mr. McConville, if you'd like to weigh in.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I would not be disinclined if I ever start running again. I believe I would run on a bike lane before I would run on the sidewalk on Warrensville Center as well.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Mr. Weisman.
You know, the journey of a thousand miles begins with one step, Mr. Mayor, so...
Thank you, so noted.
I'm looking to see what's new, actually, in 432.08. Is it the bold section, section B?
That's correct.
That's, everything else is already there?
That's correct.
Right, so this is for Kelly, if she could start redlining the new legislation for us, so it makes it apparent what's new and what's not new, because it makes it, if this were redlined, we would only have to look at the new part instead of the old part, just to make sure. That should be pretty easy. And we have no bike lanes now in University Heights, is that correct? So this really applies only to where we paint bike lanes for this new area, and then prospectively, if we add bike lanes to this. Thank you.
Yes, this is in anticipation of the bike lanes that will be painted, hopefully, soon. Possibly this year. We're still working on this year. Any further questions for Mr. Grogan Myers, or any questions about this ordinance? Well, thank you, Mr. Grogan Myers. Is there a motion? We are still currently on item C.
Yeah, I'd like to move for the passage of ordinance 2018-36, amending codified ordinance section 432.08, which is entitled Driving Within Lanes or Continuous Lines of Traffic.
Okay, motion by Councilman Weisman, second by Councilwoman Weiss. Is there any discussion on this motion? And then this is, was your motion on emergency?
Yes.
Yes, yes. I meant that to be on emergency.
Very good.
And declaring an emergency.
Very good. All right, if there's no further discussion, if we could call the role first on the suspension of the rules. Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mr. Weisman.
Aye.
Mr. Sims.
Aye.
Mrs. Pardee.
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
Okay, and then on the main motion. Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mr. Weisman.
Aye.
Mr. Sims.
Aye.
Mrs. Pardee.
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
Okay, very good. Ordinance passes. Next then is item D on the agenda, which couples into the discussion we just had with regard to the parking being prohibited in bike lanes. This would be ordinance 2018-37, amending codified ordinance section 452.03 entitled Prohibited Standing or Parking Places for the Purpose of Regulating Parking in Any On-Street Path, Lane, Trail, or Multipurpose Lane Designated by Official Signs or Markings for the Exclusive Use of Bicycles or Other Non-Motorized Modes of Transportation, again on emergency. Is there any further discussion on item D? And if there is not, is there a motion?
I move that we adopt ordinance 2018-37, amending the codified ordinance section 452.03 on emergency.
Okay, very good. We have a motion by Mrs. Cameron on emergency. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Weisman. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I do have one thing.
Yes, Mr. Rock.
As it relates to the parking, like, I just read in here about so many feet from a stop sign, so many feet from, you know, different egress, ingress. As a driver, that's not always clear, and I know some cities will paint the curb yellow in areas in which they are red, in which they are not supposed to park. It may be something to consider in the future, because I've learned as a driver that when you see painted curb, it means don't park there. I don't know if everyone knows that, but if you're ever downtown and you see that, that's what that means. Unless there's a sign that says, "Don't park so many feet from the stop sign," I see it all the time. I mean, I just actually had to go around a car on Fenwick and Meadowbrook on the way to the meeting here, and I'm like, "They parked way too close to the stop sign." I know signage would be too much for every single intersection, but it's just something to consider in the future.
Yes, I mean, when it comes to parking, when it comes to driveways, for instance, we don't have a bright lane rule for how many feet is appropriate. We simply state here not to block the driveway, and then it is somewhat subjective. If a driver feels like they can't get out of their driveway, well, then it would appear that they're being blocked. But here, like you're saying, when it's 20 feet from a crosswalk, or 30 feet from a stop sign, or flashing beacon, traffic control signal, those are things that, you know, hypothetically could be, could be marked, whether we paint the whole curb or simply paint a slash, indicating the 30-foot mark or the 20-foot mark is as appropriate. So maybe that's something we can discuss further at a safety committee meeting, or So maybe that's something we can discuss further at a safety committee meeting, or with Mr. Chuney, or with the chief of police.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, if there is none, we do have a motion on the floor, and we would go first with the call, the roll on the suspension of the rules.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman.
Aye.
Mr. Sims.
Aye.
Mrs. Partee.
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
And then on the main motion.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman.
Aye.
Mr. Sims.
Aye.
Mrs. Partee.
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
Very good. Ordinance passes. Next is Item E, Ordinance 2018-39, Small Cell Legislation on Emergency. I suppose we'll couple our discussion with Item F, which are the Small Cell Design Guidelines. Mr. McConville, would you please comment on these proposed ordinances?
Mayor, these ordinances are in connection with legislation passed by the state regulating the public right-of-way in connection with installation of small cell facilities. Small cell facilities are defined as being, bear with me here one second, wireless facilities that are, that contain antennas typically enclosed and not more than six cubic feet in volume. And as you may recall, the city was involved in litigation as a plaintiff, along with about 30 other municipalities, actually in Summit County, to contest the original small cell regulation passed by the state. And there were similar pieces of regulation brought in courts of common pleas all over the state, where dozens and dozens of municipalities were plaintiffs. Our case was the only case in which a judge ruled that the law was not unconstitutional, but judges in three other courts of common pleas found the law to be unconstitutional on the basis that it violated the Ohio Constitution's single-subject rule, because when the original legislation was passed, it was lumped together with a bunch of other unrelated subjects. Consequence of all that litigation was that the state legislature went back to the drawing board and ended up enacting a new statutory framework to take the place of the old one, and this time, the new statute was heavily negotiated by and among various parties to litigation on both sides. And so the state adopted these small cell regulations that are slated to go into effect on July 31st. So this regulation is a regulation that tracks the new state legislation and places a variety of duties and obligations on the small cell companies, and provides the city with various rights. To be a little more specific, under this proposed ordinance, a small cell carrier will need to submit a detailed application to the city that contains a site plan, drawings, a survey, elevations, and that notes the exact location of the proposed small cell facility. The city, in turn, will have the right to cause co-locations in certain instances, or to move any proposed location of a small cell facility 100 feet in either direction within the right-of-way. In addition to that, the tandem ordinance to this, the design guideline ordinance, gives the city additional latitude to cause the small cell carriers to put up screening. And in our definitions, we reserve the right to cause the carrier to install fencing, public art, landscaping, and other screening devices.
Thank you, Mr. McConville. Mr. Chuney, was there anything that you would care to add with respect to this legislation? I know you've been involved in this issue.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As you are aware, my company is a city engineer in several cities in northeastern Ohio, and we have been, when they come in to actually fill out a permit, we have been denying these permits to any of these carriers that are coming in. My opinion, this is a for-profit company that's getting free right-of-way, you know, and again, they're able to put something up for free because they're in the right-of-way. So we've been telling them, no, go get an easement from whoever you need to get an easement from, and put up your tower and make your money, you know. So we haven't had any fees, we try to franchise agreement, we've done certain things, but now it went to the state legislature, you know, and they bought it, of course, and they're a very powerful industry, and they got their approval from the state. Did they go to the Supreme Court? They went to the state Supreme?
No.
No?
No.
But they got it through the state legislature.
Correct.
It becomes law, the governor signs, it becomes law on, I think, July 31st.
Correct.
What we did is, and I was involved with Walter Haverfield, the attorney there, that came up with these design guidelines and these ordinance that you're passing now, which gives us more power than that state one. If they had just allowed the state rules, they would have come in here and done a lot of things that we don't like.
Right, just to further flesh that out a little bit, if you go back about 18 months ago, there was an instance in the city where a small cell carrier came in to the building department and was applying for three or four small cell facilities.
Correct.
And at the time, this was an unregulated area, and we required that carrier to enter into a franchise agreement with the city. That was very expensive for the carrier, relatively speaking.
Right.
And essentially controlled where those units went. The carriers were experiencing that all over the state, and so they went to the state legislature to get a law enacted, and through their lobby, were able to get a very one-sided law enacted that essentially allowed the small cell carriers carte blanche to put small cell facilities in the right-of-way without municipal approval. They had the right to go in to any right-of-way, any location, and install these facilities. That is what created the litigation. That's why the cities all banded together and sued and claimed that the law, for a variety of reasons, was unconstitutional. In three of the four cases that were pending at the common pleas level, the cities prevailed, and those cases were going up on appeal to the courts of appeals throughout the state. And as a result of that litigation, the lobby got together with the municipalities and worked with the state legislature to craft a law that's fair. That's the law that's going into place at the end of this month, and that is, has created the necessity for us to adopt these regulations.
And I really do appreciate the ordinance. I mean, these things are computers now, and they need more repeating, more data, you know, you're going to see these, you're going to see them all over the place, and we just want to control them. We want to keep them away from sewers, away from where we think we're going to widen a road, domain, this thing, you know, there's stuff, there's a very detailed plan that they have to submit to my office for approval before they can get their permit. And then if they don't get a permit, we can tell them, take it down.
Yeah, and to that point, one of the additional provisions that the state legislature addressed, and I think to the satisfaction of the municipalities, is depending on what type of application is filed, whether they're co-locating, or desiring to build a new tower, or just make repairs to an existing facility, the city is given periods of time in which to process those applications.
Right.
Between, I think it's between 90 and 150 days, depending on the type of application. So we really do have the opportunity to, you know, convince them where they should put their tower, or where they should co-locate, and we have adequate time to really review these applications in detail.
There will be a fee we're going to charge for the permit, but it's limited to $250, and that was, again, the state passed that law, and I don't think we were allowed to change that.
Right, that's an amount that's set by statute, and then we will be able to require them to renew every year at the cost of $200, and that's per facility.
And there is a set number of small cell devices that may be included on one permit application, but that's also has a ceiling, so.
Right.
Right, so it's not like $250 buys you everything that you would want to lay out in one city, but it would get you more than one.
Right. We're limited on that, unfortunately.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chuney.
Yes, Mrs. Partee.
Mr. Chuney?
Sorry.
I'm glad that you brought up widening the road or working on the sewer. I understand that this first section is about the permits and some of the basic application, and the second ordinance we're going to pass is about design, but I thought I read about a requirement that if possible, they have to locate something underground.
That actually is true. If they have equipment that is separate and apart from the actual antenna, and it can be located underground, then they have to locate it underground.
So that is a requirement? Is that in the design?
They still need the tower, it's kind of a tower that'll go up, but there's usually a box or something with the equipment that hangs on the pole, and we could possibly require them to put that underground, yes.
Okay, great.
I believe that is in the design guidelines.
Rather than hanging on the pole. It's not a big, it's not a refrigerator or anything.
About like that? I looked at pictures online. Thank you.
Anything further for Mr. Chuney? Mr. Rock?
I was driving on Meadowbrook yesterday west, and on the corner of Warrensville Center Road and Meadowbrook, I never noticed it before, but ever since I've been reading about it, it's just, that's what you're talking about?
Guess what? It appeared last week. They have no permit. I didn't know anything about it.
It's huge.
The building department, Jeff told me about it this morning. I went by, I said, "What is this?" And he didn't know what it was.
Where is it again?
Northwest corner of Warrensville Center and Meadowbrook.
Wow.
So is that the?
I believe that's one of them. I think that's what they're going to look like. I don't know how they put it up without anybody knowing about it, but I had no clue. And the building commissioner's on vacation this week, so I didn't ask him, but I would assume if they had an application come in, they would have sent it my way. I don't think they got one. I think they just put it up.
Yes.
Now, um...
Which is one we can make and take it down, I think.
I don't know if it's part of the design.
He said that he was going, somebody got a call.
When you drive through Shaker Heights, you see these little devices on top of light poles. I'm assuming that's the same device, but they're painted black to match the light pole.
That's the interconnect for their traffic signals. You're talking about in the traffic signals, they have those antennas, that's how they do their closed-loop system, instead of wiring them all together, because Shaker Heights is so spread out. They do it by, again, the cellphone technology, and those are the antennas that are up there. That's City of Shaker Heights own set.
Got it, okay. But in that, though, that makes sense, that they're painted to match.
The color, the black, just like the black poles, correct, yeah.
That's what's in the setup.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
But we have that right as well, to maybe talk about color and things like that in the design guidelines.
Should you mind that we can insist on?
I just have one other.
Oh.
You know, the color to camouflage.
Yeah, we will have the right to regulate the screening and the look, and in certain areas, we're requiring that they use metal poles as opposed to wooden, if they're going to build a new pole. So, yeah, we will have the ability to dictate how it's going to look to some extent.
I mean, to be honest with you, my first choice is to tell them to locate on a pole that's already there, instead of putting a new one up. We have a lot of poles in the city already. No, we don't own those. First Energy owns them, whoever owns the pole, so that's a problem. But our first choice, we're going to tell them, you have to ask them first, you know, if you can go on that pole, rather than sticking another one right next to it, you know.
Okay, Mr. Wiseman.
Perhaps, we don't know the answer to this question now, but if it's possible for these people to put up these items without seeking permission and to just put it up, maybe we can put something in the ordinance or add it later that says, "You're fined $1,000 a day if you do this without building permits."
We do, there is a penalty provision that's contained in the ordinance.
But I've been regulated by the state. But it continues each day, I believe, doesn't it?
I think it does.
Because that's the way I read it.
Any person or entity found guilty of violating, disobeying, omitting, neglecting, or refusing to comply with any of the provisions of this chapter shall be fined not less than $100 nor more than $500 for each offense. A separate and distinct offense shall be deemed committed each day during or on which a violation occurs or continues. So we have some leverage.
Right. You guys are on top of it.
Well, I just wanted to make one suggestion, too, for the boxes, like, it sounds like Meadowbrook and Warrensville, which I haven't actually seen, but it's a box on the ground, I assume.
Yeah, it's on a pole.
Oh, it's on the pole, okay. If there's anything that is on the ground, I know that west side of Cleveland and some Akron locations have commissioned public art on the item, so they have some really neat designs actually on the box, and I'll try to find some pictures of those. But if in the permit package, they could get suggestions of what they could do, that might be nice, too, because that would be great public art, and probably very easy to put on.
Very interesting, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Partee.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Chuney or Mr. McConville? Any further discussion on the proposed ordinance? Okay, well, starting with E, is there a motion?
So moved, Mayor. I move we adopt Ordinance 2018-39, Small Cell Legislation on Emergency.
Very good. We have a motion by Vice Mayor Partee. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sims. Is there any further discussion? Okay, and this is on emergency, so if we will take the roll first on the suspension of the rules.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman.
Aye.
Mr. Sims.
Aye.
Mrs. Partee.
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
And on the main motion, please.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman.
Aye.
Mr. Sims.
Aye.
Mrs. Partee.
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
Okay, very good. Ordinance 2018-39 passes. Next item is Item F, Ordinance 2018-43, Small Cell Design Guidelines on Emergency. This is the companion ordinance we were talking about. Is there any further discussion on this, or do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Cameron. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sims. Is there any discussion on the motion?
And it's on emergency, correct?
Yes, this would be on emergency, correct?
Yes, definitely on emergency.
Very good. Thank you, Councilwoman Sims. And I assume your second still applies, Councilman?
Um...
It's a Councilwoman Cameron, and then Councilman Sims.
The only thing I would do is read the title of the ordinance to directly, which is an ordinance enacting new chapter 851 entitled Small Cell Design Guidelines and Declaring an Emergency.
Okay, let me find.
Well, then why don't we let you make the motion?
Yes, very good, okay. So, yes, that would be an ordinance enacting new chapter 851 entitled Small Cell Design Guidelines and Declaring an Emergency.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
That sounds good to me.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Cameron.
Well, I mean, it was already moved, I just read it, the title, into the record.
Very good. Thank you, Councilman Sims. Is there any further discussion on this motion? If we could call the roll then on the suspension of the rules.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman.
Aye.
Mr. Sims.
Aye.
Mrs. Partee.
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
And then on the main motion, please.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman.
Aye.
Mr. Sims.
Aye.
Mrs. Partee.
Aye.
and authorizing the mayor to file appropriate articles of incorporation. This would be on first reading. Mr. McConville, would you care to comment on this ordinance?
Yes, Mayor, this is an ordinance that would create a community improvement corporation for the village. Community Improvement Corporation is a statutory entity that exists under chapter 1724 of the Revised Code. It has broad powers to promote development on behalf of the city. And typically, CICs, as they're known, are utilized to conduct specifically real estate transactions since a CIC is not bound by the same kind of public bidding laws that a municipality is. So a municipality is enabled through this chapter of the Revised Code to transfer property to the CIC. And then the CIC can function more like a typical corporation in choosing what to do with that real property. So, for example, if the city came into ownership of infill lots that were foreclosed on, it could transfer those lots to the CIC, and the CIC could look for development partners for those lots in more conventional ways than the city can. The existence of CICs or economic development corporations to conduct these kinds of development activities is fairly typical. And there are economic development corporations, some of which are CICs and some of which are nonprofit corporations throughout northeast Ohio. My recommendation is that this go to committee and that, you know, we have a committee discussion about the relative merits of a CIC versus some other kind of economic development corporation. And maybe provide some further insight at the committee level, unless you have specific questions.
Councilwoman Weiss.
Thank you. Can this potentially interact with our land bank that we are not exactly sure how it functions yet?
Yes, and technically, a land bank is supposed to be created under this same chapter of the ordinances. So there's a lot of overlap between the economic development function versus a land bank function. They have a lot of similar, a lot of the same rights.
So which does one, is one higher than the other? Like, if there's a foreclosed property and the city wants, like, do you put in the land bank first? Or does it go into the CIC first?
Well, Mr. Grogan Myers, I know that we've had some discussions on this. Shall we get him involved in this discussion? Would you care to come to the podium?
No.
So, in essence, the land bank legislation allows us to assert ourselves into the tax foreclosure process, whereas the 501(c)(3) functions more as the development arm.
Okay, let me get this correct. A land bank allows intervention in the foreclosure process?
Correct. So, for example, when there's a tax foreclosure that goes on in the city, since we enacted the land bank legislation, the county prosecutor's office now sends us what's called a land affidavit. So we're attesting to what the current condition of the property is. Is it a structure? Is it a vacant lot? Is it occupied or unoccupied? And based on those conditions, we as the land bank can decide to take the property into the land bank once the tax foreclosure process resolves itself. And then from there, that's where it comes into the city's land bank. But it's a program of the city. It's not a separate organization.
Yeah, that's a great way of putting it. So when, by virtue of passing the legislation, the county land bank interacts with us in this fashion, but we don't really have a separate corporation that exists. So it's still owned by the city. In order for property to pass from the city to a CIC, to this community improvement corporation that you're contemplating, council will have to pass an ordinance with respect to any parcel or parcels that indicates that the land is no longer needed for any municipal purpose. So you will be transferring these properties initially by legislative action. There's no other way to initiate the transfer.
But we could transfer those properties from our land bank to the CIC?
Correct.
Development.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Mrs. Partey.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, if you wanted to go to committee, Finance Committee would be happy to take it.
I was actually thinking governmental affairs. I mean, there's lots of different ways this could go. It could also go to building, because there's an aspect there too, potentially, but...
Well, you decide.
Or we could do it jointly.
Fine, go ahead. Mr. Weisman.
Yes.
So I have a couple of questions. First of all, I'm not worried about how these properties get into the CIC. I'm concerned about how they get out and who has, who determines where they go and what happens to them. At this point, council has the say-so in terms of properties like this. And I think we all have reasonable minds, but I can imagine this is a scenario where there might not be agreement, and I'm just concerned about how something gets out.
So the CIC will function as any other corporation does through a board of directors. This legislation has a suggested composition of board of directors in section four. Currently, the draft contains a board of five members. That includes the mayor, the community development coordinator, the vice mayor, one member appointed by the mayor, and one member appointed by council, so that the city essentially, by having such a small and tight board, would retain substantial control over what was happening with the property. It is a requirement of the statute that at least three members of the board hold office or otherwise be employees of the municipality. And you have to have a minimum of five board members. So you can expand the board. You don't have to. But you do have to have three folks who are either elected or are officers or are working for the city. And that's why we have the mayor, the community development coordinator, and the vice mayor.
But we could conceivably place limits on their ability to conduct business unless they sought council's approval.
I'm not thinking so.
Look, I have no problem with this mayor, and I'll probably agree with almost everything that he decides to do. Let's say there's a mayor that I don't agree with. I'm a little hesitant to give that fictional person, if it exists, the say-so over selling off five or six parcels of land to a developer when it's maybe something the council isn't into. That's my concern.
Councilman Sims?
To some extent, I share that concern, but I think that that concern is basically alleviated by the fact that when we're talking about properties that the city has, we would, as a council, be responsible for transferring those properties into the CIC in the first place. So that's where we would influence whether or not we wanted to go into the CIC, because as either the mayor or the law director stated, we would have already determined that there was no municipal use for the property. But the other thing about a CIC, and what I just wanted to add to the conversation, because it's been kind of narrow and only focused on the transfer of properties that the city might own, the work of the CIC is much broader than that. It's really economic development. And, for example, we just passed the reinvestment areas. And in many CICs, they have a responsibility for administering those tax abatement programs.
That's accurate, and the CIC can be as dynamic as you allow it to be. It really ends up being a matter of funding often. You know, CICs are often funded through contributions from a city council. Just to go back to the question that you asked, Mr. Weisman, I can give you a scenario that certainly would be a possibility, and it's one that I've worked through in another municipality. CIC works with a developer to come up with a concept for development that relates to a particular piece of property that the CIC does not own. But the municipality knows it's happening, obviously, and wants to see an agreement reached. CIC negotiates an agreement with that developer. That agreement gets signed. It's for a particular project and use of the land that the CIC does not own. And then subsequent to that, the municipality transfers the land into the CIC. So now it can perform under the contract.
That's my concern. It's a great concern.
Thank you. Mrs. Weiss.
Okay, so I just want to get a little more clarification, the land bank versus the CIC. Can a land bank potentially sell properties? So...
Yes, a land bank can. But again, our land, we really don't have a separate corporation that's a land bank.
But do you need one to sell properties? I'm just trying to figure out why we need the CIC.
Well, if the city were to sell a property today, it would be selling a property as the city because we don't have a separate corporate entity that owns anything. We own everything. And so if the city is going to sell a property today, we are obligated to go through public bidding.
Okay.
Whereas a CIC, which is a nonprofit, would not have to do that.
Correct.
But, in the same token, you would hope they would have internal policies and procedures which would essentially do the same thing.
Right.
You would hope that they would operate like a business that was concerned about its bottom line.
Right, so again, I'm not, I want to see what's the differentiating point with this. But I think this is like a larger conversation than what this is right here.
Ultimately, we would want to...
I'm not sure why we put it on the agenda.
Well, we needed it for first reading, and then, you know, we thought we'd send it to committee and continue that conversation.
This is going to be a committee discussion. Four more days.
Is this something we should be...
Discussing?
Yes. Or do we out loud where... Did you want the floor, Mr. Sims, is what I'm asking?
No, I was asking our legal counsel a question.
Oh, I see, okay. Very good.
So we don't need to vote on this now?
No, 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 we weren't asking, this is a first reading. What we wanted to do was refer this to committee. My initial thought was to refer it to government affairs. I know that Mrs. Partey is also interested in seeing it in finance.
That's fine, they go to the meetings.
That's true. So it may not, it may be a distinction without a difference at this point. And Mrs. Weiss, would you be, as chair of that committee, would you be willing to accept this? Very good. Thank you. Okay, well, then, we have had our first reading on this, and we have referred it to committee. So I think we can move on to the next agenda item, which is item H, resolution 2018-42, accepting a community development block grant in the amount of $142,965 from Cogge County for the 2018 Cedar South Green Traffic Calming Project on Emergency. And I know that both Mr. Goff and Mr. Grogan Myers will be speaking on this. So who would like to go first?
I'll go first.
Okay, Mr. Grogan Myers.
Just shy of two weeks ago, we were sent a letter that announced that we were recommended and subsequently awarded a CDVG grant. So this is the grant that we came before you to ask for permission to submit. I think it was about a month ago, a month and a half ago now, so quick turnaround. So this first piece of legislation is accepting that grant amount. We were awarded funding for the stamped and colored crosswalks between Cedar and Silsby on South Green Road. So there is, as I had touched base on in that meeting, an accelerated timeline. So we do have to construct the project and be done with the construction by the end of November and have all of our paperwork submitted for reimbursement by that time. So we're working on a quick timeline. This and the subsequent two or three ordinances are dealing with that, doing the financial mechanisms for us to be able to ultimately seek bids.
So, as you were just stating, the first one is, kind of as best practice, the council should be formally accepting any grants that we receive. The next ordinance that follows afterwards is reestablishing the CDVG grant fund so that we can have a segregated fund for the federal dollars that will be coming into this project. And then the last ordinance in the group of three is authorizing appropriations for the total budgeted amount of the project, as well as doing an advance from the general fund to the CDVG fund. With an advance, what we're doing is essentially a short-term loan from the general fund to the target fund, in this case, the CDVG fund. That allows us to have money upfront to spend on the project, since the grant is a reimbursement grant. It also allows us for a couple of items. I think you were referring to the bus shelters as items that we might be purchasing as part of the project that aren't covered by the grant itself. And any money when we're doing an advance, this is a short-term loan, after we're done with the project, any portion that stays in the fund and gets spent, it stays there. So it would essentially be whatever part really comes out of the city's pocket after the grant reimbursement. We come back to council later and ask for that to be changed from an advance to a transfer. And at the same time, we'd also do an advance out of the CDVG grant fund for those dollars that were essentially in there as a cash flow sort of mechanism back to the general fund once we've concluded the project. So we're looking at only, I believe the number was about $13,000 potentially as possible money for the city to spend. Most of that worked out to, I believe, actually, just be the bus shelters as part of the contingency in the grant application.
Thank you, Mr. Grogan Myers. Thank you, Mr. Goff. So, as explained, items H, I, and J are generally together, even though they are separate items on the agenda. Is there any discussion on these, especially, or we could start with item H, Mr. Rock?
Yeah, my question is, for the reimbursement, would we be reimbursed in calendar year 2018? Since the grant should be fully wrapped up, I believe, before the end of November, the answer should be yes. If for some reason that was a holdup from the county in doing that reimbursement, it would show as an advance outstanding from the general fund to the CDVG fund at year end. And that then would be accounted for in the following year of any revenues that weren't received. And then doing the correction to, the adjustment, not correction, to change any of the respective dollars from an advance to repay back to the general fund or those dollars that stayed from an advance to a transfer. An advance, it's a short term. Usually, it's deemed as something that's less than a year. So the timing that we're kind of doing at year end, it is common from the lap of one year to the next. But at the same time, this whole project should be resolved before that, before that.
So I have a similar question, Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Sims.
Because we're going to advance the entire $140-something dollars for the block grant. And then there's an additional $13,000 that is related to something else that we might do. Is that correct?
That is, that is correct.
So my question is, when I read this ordinance, and I'm sure it's correct, but you just have to help me understand it. I don't see, I see the reestablishment of the...
CDVG.
The block grant account, okay. But I don't see anywhere in here where we're actually authorizing the general fund to advance money to the community development block grant fund.
Okay, if I may, if I may, if we look at ordinance 2018-41, there is a typo. And if you look in section two, it says transaction advanced from general fund to fund the CDVG fund. It shows typed in $13,200. That should be $156,165. That was something I was going to clarify once I got to that letter on the agenda. But basically, now is a good time to mention it, since you did bring it up, and we're all talking about the three items and as a group.
That's a clerical error on my part. I did not realize when we were drafting this on Friday that it was on a reimbursement basis. So we have to have money in the fund in order to spend it. Otherwise, the fund balance would go negative, and that's a budgetary... otherwise the fund balance would go negative, and that's a budgetary violation. So the advance just allows us to have money temporarily in there.
Right, and then the, this is not a question, but I'm familiar with another community that had a bus shelter component to one of their projects, and what they did is they installed a shelter that was sort of like a solar shelter, with solar panels and stuff like that. But they were able to get a grant for that, and it was a substantial grant. So I don't know what we're planning, or how that might be integrated into our shelter, if possible, but it's a possibility.
Thank you.
I would be in favor of such a solar-powered shelter.
So.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, if I may ask, Councilman Sims, since he's aware of such an entity, is it possible for you to ascertain the company?
Um.
Solar?
I think that could be done by the administration. The community is Cleveland Heights.
I was going to say, are you referring to like the one that said Coventry and Mayfield?
Yes, I believe that's where it's located.
Yes, okay, by the marathon station, because I've noticed that too, that would be a fine thing to have here.
Okay, well, great.
But we would have to look into it further. In the meantime, we're in some pretty tight deadlines when it comes to this particular project, although the, it seems to me the bus shelter is something that we may or may not have to do in conjunction with the rest of the project. So if we were to continue to look at that, we could explore that further and come back. On that one part, the rest of it, though, we should nevertheless address.
I can't remember, what was our decision?
Regarding.
What is our project?
Oh, Cedar Green, it's going to be crosswalks and.
Stamped colored concrete crosswalks.
Okay. Great.
Yes.
That's the calming?
It's, it's a misnomer. It's designed to highlight that there are crosswalks in the intersection. So currently, when I was doing the pictures for the grant, all the paint's fading and whatnot, and that's part of our normal repaint, repainting program, but this draws attention to the fact that there are crosswalks there.
Right, so it's the, there's a crosswalk at Cedar and Green, then there's one from Heinens over to the, the Development Board T-Bores is, and then there's one at the Sillsby Green Light.
Correct.
So those three, I'm sorry?
There will be.
There's a crosswalk there now.
There, there's one, there will be one cutting across South Green, where there currently is not one.
But at the light, on, at Sillsby Road in Green, there is a crosswalk at that light to cross Green Road over to Beechwood. There's a painted crosswalk.
On the. We're doing north of that.
North of Sillsby?
Yes.
Correct.
So the same, like, just the other side of the intersection? So that'll go just closer to Beechwood Boulevard, basically, right?
Uh-uh.
Campus, it comes into the intersection, campus, it's on the north side of the intersection.
It sounds like Baintree.
It's right along that same intersection.
I think it is Baintree, isn't it?
Just south of Baintree, north of Sillsby, yes.
Yep.
Sandwiched in between.
There can't be much of a sandwich.
That, that actually hits the sidewalk, the other University Heights sidewalk.
Yes.
All right, but there's a there's a light right there, that, that, that puts the crosswalk right where cars stop at the traffic light there.
Yes, and we'll be pulling the stop bar back enough to put a crosswalk there with a head pole.
The light will be moving, the traffic light?
No, the stop bar.
Wait, on the curve over there?
The bar on the pavement, that, where the cars are to stop.
The car has a curve right there.
Sure does.
That's a really, that's a hard place to cross.
Sure is. Okay.
Right, so at that, at that, so basically now the cars, they pass Baintree, right, and they sit at the light there, there may be, there's, that's why there's always a block in that intersection. So it's going to come back still on the south side of Baintree, right?
Yes.
Yes.
But when you cross there, you, I mean, there is a curve, though, it's not really.
It's not safe.
It's not really hitting, is it hitting another sidewalk? That's where campus, that's where campus curves out.
Yeah, we had to create two handicap ramps there, and we'll put in tech poles as well.
And, and the cars are now going to stop 15 or 20 feet north of that spot.
And you'll probably get to go ahead and cross when campus gets to green. You've already pushed the button, that's when they're going to cross.
Right, right, but the campus green light, I mean, I walk that, you know, five times a week at least. So that campus light is green for, I don't know, maybe 15 seconds.
Well, that's just the time.
It'll be adjusted. And, yeah, I mean, I just, there's cars, the cars block Baintree all the time there, right? And if you move them back, it's just going to be more likely that they, now, now you've got to stand there and honk at them and wag your finger so they won't block Baintree, right? But now, now the first car really is on, is sort of at the edge of Baintree Road, if you move that parking bar back.
We'll take it with them.
And I'm trying to be difficult, I'm just saying. Yeah, that's a really a weird intersection, and people don't pay attention to the "don't block Baintree" sign, and I am the only human who does not turn left at the end of that street, I got to tell you. Everybody turns left even though there's a sign there, so.
Which?
I go to Sillsby now, I don't make the left on Baintree anymore, I follow the sign.
There are two people now who don't turn left on the Green Road. It is, I mean, that.
Turning left on the Green Road off of Baintree?
I'm sorry?
Off of Baintree.
Turning left to Green Road, I mean, because we, the no-left term was because there were so many accidents there. I'm concerned about putting this crosswalk right in that, right in that spot, so. I have no doubt that you guys will be able to look at it, but when you see it on these papers, it's different than when you're actually. Sorry, I've talked too much.
No, not at all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Grogan.
Well, you're welcome, Councilman Weiss.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Let's get this one.
All right, so. Are there any further questions for Mr. Chuni, or Mr. Grogan Myers, or Mr. Goff? All right, well then, we are looking first at Resolution 2018-42, Accepting A Community Development Block Grant in the Amount Of $142,965 From Cogga County For The 2018 Cedar Green, Cedar-South Green Traffic Calming Project On Emergency. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilman Sims, second by Councilwoman Cameron. Is there any discussion?
On emergency.
Yes, on emergency.
On emergency.
Well, I think the only thing I would say is, with respect to this project, I'd like to thank our county executive Armin Buddhist and our county council representative Michael Hauser for their full-throated support of this proposal, because it's here because they recommended that we get this. And of course, part of that recommendation, crucial to that recommendation, was the strong work of Mr. Grogan Myers and Mr. Chuni in the application and the drawings. If there is no further discussion, we will vote first on the suspension of the rules. Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weissman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Partee?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
And on the main motion. Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weissman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Partee?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Next is Item I, Ordinance 2018-40, Reestablishing The CDBG Community Development Block Grant Fund For Accounting For Federal Community Development Block Grants On Emergency. Mr. Goff, is there anything you wanted to add with respect to this?
Previously had a CDBG grant on the books, and it's unclear. What exactly happened with it, but we don't currently have one, so we need to have one in order to segregate the federal funds for the CDBG from the rest of our funds, and it's really just an accounting matter.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Goff, is there a motion, oh, Mr. Weissman?
I'm sorry, it sounds like you said we have money in the bank that's earmarked CDBG, but we don't know what it's for.
No, they're, looking through the history of the funds and accounts from year to year, we have previously had a CDBG fund. To my knowledge, the money was spent down in the fund, and then the fund number, rather than continuing to exist for future CDBG projects, was converted over to the park fund. So we need to create a new CDBG fund.
Oh, we know what that was.
So we cleaned up the funds, I'm going to say Larry's last summer here, if I'm not mistaken. Remember, he went in, he gave us a list of funds, let's get rid of these. So if you're looking back, I'm trying to put it together, it was the summer of?
16?
16.
That sounds, it sounds about right, it was either 15 or 16.
So it may, I'm not, I'm not sure that that's one of the actions we took, but I'm saying that may be the time period when he, when he made this particular change. Is that when the park bond was approved?
The park bond, I think, was approved in 15 or 14 even.
And we got the money in that November, right?
But that CDBG fund had been there for quite some time, and it was at zero for quite some time.
We haven't gotten a CDBG grant for years.
Yeah, I don't think so.
So maybe, maybe when he didn't want to create a fund, and he just changed the name.
Right.
That does appear to have been what happened with several funds.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Well, I'm glad to hear it, Mr. Goff, I appreciate it.
No need to rest it, that's where it's at.
All right, are there any further questions for Mr. Goff on the, on this ordinance? Proposed ordinance? And if there are not, could we have a motion?
So moved.
On emergency?
On emergency.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilman Sims, and a second by Councilman Weissman. Any further discussion on the motion? If there is none, then we will first take a vote on the emergency. Suspension of the rules. Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weissman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Partee?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
And on the main motion. Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weissman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Partee?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next is Letter J, Ordinance, well, again, before I read it, we should make this correction. I may reference the typo in Section 2 of 2018-41. You should cross out 13,200 there and change that to 156,165 dollars. So, all right, so. One moment. Okay, yes, that's what we'll do. So, thus memorializing the change, the correction of the typo, reading this, Ordinance 2018-41, Appropriating Funds In The Amount Of $156,165 For Current And Other Expenditures Of The City Of University Heights, Ohio For The Period Commencing January 1, 2018 And Ending December 31, 2018, E.G. The CDBG Grant On Emergency.
So moved.
Okay, there's motion by Councilman Sims, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Weiss, we'll go with Weiss, sure.
On emergency.
Okay, any discussion? If there is none, we'll take a vote on the suspension of the rules. Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weissman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Partee?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
And on the main motion. Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weissman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Partee?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. Next is Item K, Motion To Approve Seeking Bids For The Cedar Green Improvement Project With County CDBG Funding. Mr. Grogan Myers, was there anything you wanted to add with respect to this item?
No.
Okay, very good, Mr. Chuni, anything by you?
No, I was back to design this week, and so we finished out the line about it.
Excellent, very good, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilman Weissman, second by Councilman Sims.
That is to seek bids for the Cedar Green Improvement Project With County CDBG Funding.
Yes, that is correct.
Might that be on emergency, or is that just a regular?
I don't know, just a motion, I don't think it requires an emergency. Very good, okay, is there any discussion on the motion? If there is none, Mr. McConville, will you take the roll? Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weissman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Partee?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Very good, motion passes. Next is Item L, Motion To Request Bids For Bombardier Sidewalk Snowplow Equipment. Mr. Pecorni, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for the Service Department To Purchase A New Bombardier Sidewalk Snowplow. Currently, our sidewalk plow is a 1986 unit. About three years ago, we had a sister unit that was the same thing that broke. We had at that time to purchase a new unit. We spent approximately $110,000 to purchase that new unit, and now I would like to purchase a unit to replace the last 1986 unit before it breaks, which is anticipated sometime in the near future.
Thank you, Mr. Pecorni, are there any questions for Mr. Pecorni? Mrs. Weiss?
So, in three years, it went up. You're requesting $140,000, is that what I saw?
Correct, well, that's an estimate. We don't really know yet what the bids will come in at. I did request a quote from Gibson Equipment, which was the company that supplied the last one, and they gave me a number of about $138,000.
So $138,000 in three years?
Correct. I'm hoping that'll come back down a little bit with the public bid of the item.
Any further questions for Mr. Pecorni? Well, I would simply say that I know that the clearing of our sidewalks is something that's important to many members of our community, and, you know, we have, we got by this last winter with the 86 unit in addition to the newer unit, and we have been on borrowed time with it, it seems, so. If we want to maintain the level of service that our residents desire with respect to the sidewalk clearing, I do believe this unit is an appropriate expenditure at this time, so it's a matter of seeing what we can do for the best price we can get for this unique piece of equipment for our city.
If I might add one item also, this was discussed at several committees and was part of the 402 capital expenditures for this year.
Yes. 401.
401.
401. Mrs. Cameron, did you have something?
No, I just wanted to move that we adopt a motion to request bids for the Bombardier Sidewalk Snowplow Equipment.
Okay, all right, motion by Mrs. Cameron, second by Mr. Sims.
Should we put a dollar amount on that?
Well, I think it's just a matter of requesting bids at this point.
Okay.
Okay. All right, is there any discussion on this motion? Okay, seeing none, Mr. McConville, will you take the roll? Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weissman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Partee?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, thank you, Mr. Pecorni. All right, Letter M, Resolution 2018-44, Accepting A Nature Works Grant Of $105,254 From Ohio Department Of Natural Resources For The Sillsby Road Park Project. This is on emergency. We will be hearing from Mr. Grogan Myers and Mr. Goff.
Thank you, Mayor. So in following with Mr. Goff's suggestion, being a best practice to accept the grant, we first wanted to make sure that we were doing that, to formally accept the grant, and to then, similar to the CDBG project, appropriate the funds. So those are the first two measures, if you'll allow me to talk about them kind of in a cluster.
Sure, please do.
So that's kind of, again, the funding mechanism on the backside, and as you had previously authorized us to do, we went out and sought bids, and before use the motion to approve and award the park project to enable us to begin construction here.
Okay, very good, thank you, Mr. Grogan Myers, Mr. Goff, anything to add?
It's very much the same process as with the CDBG grant, it's a reimbursement basis. The difference is, it does have a 25% match by the city, so a portion of that advance will end up staying in that fund for permanent, for use is actually paying part of the expenditure, and we will have an adjustment later in the year to recognize whatever the appropriate percentage, appropriate dollar amount that needs to be changed for an advance or a transfer. But at this point, we are just asking for the appropriation based upon the total dollar amount of the award plus a 25% match.
There was a 25% match on this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, ODNR has a up to 75% reimbursement as part of the grant.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
So initially, we estimated for a project cost, I believe it was about $227,000, which is what generated the original grant application, and the 100. and the one hundred and five thousand dollar and change grant award. So, but I believe from when we were talking about this earlier today, the anticipated expenditures, though, are significantly less than. Correct. The actual amount that we were granted with the award. Correct. Correct.
Okay. All right, is there any discussion on this? Mr. Wiseman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I've been presented with resident concerns that include the matter of safety, and just have questions about the fencing for the park and how the chief of police views this in terms of potential to, to attract people who aren't going to behave themselves, especially during the nighttime hours. Is he here, the chief?
No, the interim chief was, is on a vacation that he planned out about a year ago. So he is not here with us this evening for family weddings, a pair of them. So he is not here tonight. I do understand that interim chief Rogers has viewed the plans and, and has indicated his, his approval of them with the fencing that's indicated. Is that, would you also understand, Mr. Grogan Myers?
That is correct, yes. Once, once the plan was more fleshed out through resident feedback, I did sit down with Chief Rogers to ask his opinions about the site, its, you know, proposed furnishings and fences and whatnot, and he asked, or, you know, proposed that a fence that was six feet high, something that allowed them, were there to be something that to happen, to not allow a suspect to flee the, the park was beneficial. It, forgive me, I don't remember his exact law enforcement term, but there's some sort of element of containment that he believed was beneficial.
So I'm guessing that he's saying if there's a six-foot, six-foot fence in the park, then we can run there and then hop the fence and run away.
That's correct. His, his concern was, it's the park's proximity to so many streets around it, through the access of the backyard or through the park. So, so having that high of a fence, someone can't easily just hurt over the fence.
Right. And there's contiguous houses on each side.
That is correct.
Side of the park. Have those residents been consulted, the ones that continue?
Yes, they have. I delivered notices door to door.
Okay. And in terms of the vantage points for the police being able to see in all areas of the park from the street, he's comfortable with that as well?
Yes, he is. So in terms, with the landscape architects' help, some low, what she called low meadow plantings were proposed and are now part of the bid for the front of the project, meaning they won't be more than about two feet high, so that anyone can see from front to back of the park. I know there was a concern about an evergreen in the back of the park, that evergreen will be right up against the fence. So there won't be a space between the fence and that evergreen.
We talked a lot about, we, I'm not speaking very well, we talked a lot about the design and sort of being stuck with the design that we submitted to the ODNR, right? If we changed it, it'd be a problem with the grant.
Not stuck with in, in a, what was proposed in the grant was a conceptual plan. So, so in essence, here's a piece of playground equipment, here's a general path, a picnic table and things like that. Parts did evolve through the public conversation in terms of what type of fence, how high the fence was, and, and what type of playground equipment is there. So, so the path had changed, some of the plantings had changed. Those things grew out of the public meeting.
But if there's, if any part of the park was viewed to pose a safety problem or to cause problems that we had not anticipated during the planning phase, we'd be able to alter it in meaningful fashion.
From, from the grant application to its current build-out, is that what you're asking?
No. The park's built, two years from now, we decide that there's something wrong with the fence. In terms of safety, this particular shrub isn't growing a certain way, right? We can then change it and move things and cut things if we want to.
Correct, correct. The, the park is required to stay a park, but should something die, should a plant die, we're allowed to replace it. Should something need to be trimmed back for safety reasons, we can do so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Grogan Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
How long is the park required to be a park?
That's a great question. I would have to go back and look at the documentation.
Be very interested to know.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Rock?
I need to know that as well. We talked at length during the design that there was going to be a ramp in the front. There's significant help for entering the park. Now, I see this neighboring sidewalk here. Is that sort of slow? Is it?
Yes, so. The, the landscape architect felt confident that we could regrade the park in such a way that would eliminate the need for a ramp.
So that all people would be able to use the park?
Correct. That's both, both a value that we share as well as a requirement of the grant, that it be accessible.
One concern I do have is, one concern that I do have is that as children play in this playground area here, as they enter the site, let's say they're coming from the north side of Sillsby, they would have to cross the street. There's no crosswalk there. There is no crosswalk at the neighboring street on either side. I'm looking at Allison Road, Farland, Norway. No stop sign, no crosswalk. Has there been any consideration to adding a stop sign, four-way stop at Allison Road, which would only be one property away, so that children and parents can safely cross the street?
I would leave that to the safety director.
I have not looked at that yet, but that's certainly something we could look at.
Yeah, I mean, it's just a concern of mine because I see how the Fenwick Park is working, and I live on Fenwick Road, I see people crossing the street without even booking, and it, there should be a four-way stop there. But because Sillsby is a much busier street, there really should be this four-way stop at Allison Road, which is literally one, two properties over, so that could provide some safe crossing of the road. I would really wholeheartedly support that.
Well, that's certainly something that we can look into and will look into. I, you know, that portion of Sillsby is a county road. I don't know how that impacts our ability to, I think it means that we have to go to the county to, with any proposal that we would have with respect to a possible stop there. Mr. Chuni, do you have any insight on that? Okay, there, we have to do that in conjunction with, with the county. But that doesn't mean that we, that isn't as much an obstacle as just as, as just an additional requirement. So if we go to them and recommend that this needs to be done for this reason, hopefully they would see it our way.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I might suggest that you ask the police to do one of their little studies of that particular area to determine the traffic level. I'm not so certain there's that much traffic in, at that particular end of the neighborhood.
On Sillsby Road?
Right. Most of the traffic seems to be from the Canterbury Corner forward to Warrensville.
Well, I, I would assume otherwise, but that, maybe that's why we need to do a study.
Right. But would there be in difficulty doing a painting side, on, on the street?
Painting of a crosswalk?
Uh-huh. Without having to put a light?
Oh, or a four-way stop, you mean?
Mm-hmm.
Perhaps not, but I don't know that, that that would be sufficient to what Mr. Rock has brought up.
It wouldn't necessarily calm the traffic, although on Fenwick Road, there is not a stop sign, but there is a large crosswalk that's sort of raised several inches with a ramp, which cars, it's obvious that it's a crosswalk, but it doesn't necessarily stop cars because there's no stop sign.
Now, are you talking about where Community Park is?
Where Community Park, right.
Okay, all right.
But what I was requesting is that we take a good hard look at creating a four-way stop at Allison Road, so that the traffic does stop, because there is more traffic on Sillsby than on Fenwick.
Mrs. Partee?
Mayor, I welcome a study to see exactly what's needed. There are other ways than a stop sign. When Coventry Road had problems, and they had children crossing for school, a lot of children crossing for school, the City of Cleveland Heights put up flashing lights in a crosswalk. They didn't put up a stop sign. So there were those flashing lights requiring people to slow down, pay attention, and, and stop, and that may be something to also consider. That might not get in the way of the fact that Sillsby is not necess, totally a city street. So, there are other options that might also fulfill what we are looking to fulfill.
I would think the neighbors are going to have an issue with that flashing light, but I don't know. Keep it short.
Well, it's not a, it's not like it's a lightning-type stroke. It's a little bit more, it, it, it should not eliminate people's living rooms, if that's what you're concerned about. It should be seen on the street.
Mechanisms that, that only lights up when you touch it, and then it flashes for fifteen seconds and you're crossing.
In fact, that's part of the Warrensville Plan, too. With, yes, Mrs. Weiss.
Just getting back to the fence, I can't tell from the drawing, it's on three sides of the park?
Correct.
So the only entrance is through Sillsby?
Correct.
And is, is it completely open on that entrance to Sillsby, or is it like partially fenced?
It's completely open.
Mr. Sims?
My question about the fence is, has the design of the fence been determined?
In terms of?
What's?
It's, it's board-on-board fence.
Board-on-board?
Similar, to match the, the fence that's already along the backside of the property.
Okay, so there's an existing fence?
Correct.
Who does that belong to?
The city.
Okay.
It's on city property.
Okay. And you can see through it or not?
No.
Cannot?
You cannot.
At all?
Correct.
And the surrounding houses, the property owners are okay with that?
Correct.
Anything further? All right, well, the first item is Item M, which is the Resolution 2018-44, accepting a Nature Works grant of one hundred and five thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars from Ohio Department of Natural Resources for the Sillsby Road Park Project on emergency. Is there a motion?
So moved on emergency.
Okay, motion by Councilman Wiseman. Is there a second?
Second on emergency.
Second by Councilwoman Cameron. Is there any discussion on that motion? If there is none, then, Mr. McConville, first on the suspension of the rules.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman.
Aye.
Mr. Sims.
Aye.
Mrs. Partee.
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
And then on the main motion.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman.
Aye.
Mr. Sims.
Aye.
Mrs. Partee.
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
Okay, resolution passes. Next then is Letter N, ordinance 2018-45, appropriating funds for current and other expenditures of the City of University Heights, Ohio for the period commencing January one, 2018, and ending December thirty-first, 2018, e.g. for the ODNR grant on emergency. Mr. Goff, is there anything you'd like to add with respect to that? I know you've touched on this already.
Yeah, we just touched on it before. It's pretty much the same as the other one, the only differ, of CDBG. The only difference is there is the twenty-five percent match that will be coming out of the advance money.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Goff. Is there a motion, or are there any questions for Mr. Goff first? No questions, then is there a motion?
I move so moved.
Okay, a motion by Councilman Sims. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is that motion on emergency, Councilman Sims?
Yes.
Very good. So he still seconded, Councilman Wiseman?
Yes.
Very good. Okay. Is there any discussion or debate on the motion? Very well, Mr. McConville, we call the roll on the suspension. Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman.
Aye.
Mr. Sims.
Aye.
Mrs. Partee.
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
Okay, and then on the main motion. Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman.
Aye.
Mr. Sims.
Aye.
Mrs. Partee.
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
Very good. Motion passes. Ordinance passes. Next is Letter O, motion to approve and award the Sillsby Road Park bid. Mr. Grogan Myers or Mr. Chuni, which of you? Okay, very good.
Yes, thank you. So the single bidder for the project was RJ Platten, who both the landscape architect and our city engineer have worked with before, and has spoken well or highly of the contractor. The project came in at just shy of a hundred and five thousand, a hundred and four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars, and, you know, just, it was a competitive bid based on, on the estimate posed by the landscape architect.
Okay, very good. Mr. Chuni, I understand you have some familiarity with this contractor?
Yes, I've worked with him many times. They're a quick contractor. You know, it's only one bid I had.
Very good. Good to know. Thank you, Mr. Chuni. Any discussion? Mr. Rock?
I have a question. Going back to the fence again, I'm sorry. When I look at the plans here, it looks like the fence, so it doesn't go all the way to the street on the sides, correct?
Correct.
So on the east property line, it looks like it goes to about the front of the house, of the neighboring house, and then on the west, it looks like it goes midway up the house on the west end, correct? So somebody driving by could see in from an angle as well. As someone's approaching east or west, they, up until the house that's blocking the rest anyway, you still can see into the park.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Yeah, that wasn't clarified earlier, but thank you.
Yes, the, the fence does become a four-foot fence as it runs along the, the neighboring houses.
So, but it's a, it's a six-foot fence on the backyard of the house.
In the sides.
But from the backyard to the front of the house, it's four feet, is what you're saying?
It's, it's six feet along the rear property line, and along the east and west property lines up until about, up until about the picnic bench.
And in which it transitions to four feet?
That's correct.
Thank you. Mr. Rock, did I include your questioning?
That was a.
At this point? Okay, very good. Thank you. Mr. Sims, did you have something?
Yeah, I have a quick question for Mr. Chuni, and it's really just to inquire as to whether he has any thoughts about why we only received one bid.
I don't know. I think it's a project architect bid or landscape architect. I'm just saying, just commenting that, yeah, you got a good contractor, but I have no idea what you're reading.
So how was it bid?
Per, per our usual bids, bid requirements, same bid documents.
No, 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 not the documents. I mean, how, how was it advertised? How did we bid this?
Through the same channels we always do. Plans were available here in City Hall, and I believe a place in Cincinnati, and it, it followed all the same bidding requirements we have as a city, and, and bid procedures.
Also had a bid meeting at the site.
Bid meeting at the site, everything, yeah.
Yeah, that's not the part that I'm asking about, though. The part that I'm asking about is.
How was it marketed?
Yeah, how was it advertised?
I, it, that was through the, the plane dealer. It was handled in all the same ways.
So the plane dealer?
Clerk of council handled it through, I got numerous inquiries from construction magazines and whatnot, asking about the project, where the plans were available.
Okay, well, that's what I needed to know, for the record.
Correct, correct.
Because it's, you know, you never want to vote on a single bid.
On a single bid, yes.
Without understanding, at least I don't want to bid on one without understanding the reason, or it was only one bid, or at least understanding that the process that we used was our regular process. So we used the, the, the same media channels that we normally use.
Correct, that's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Sims, and thank you, Mr. Grogan Myers. Are there any further questions or comments? Oh, Mrs. Partee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When might this start and when do you anticipate it being complete?
Yes, so we, subject to your approval tonight, we would be looking to set up a pre-construction meeting with the contractor later this week or early next week, with the project starting as soon as possible. In terms of the construction timeline, that's part of what we have to sit down with them, but obviously, we're limited by the season. We have to complete this fall.
I think it could, you anticipate it being done this fall?
Yes, yes.
Great, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mrs. Partee. Any further questions or comments? Okay. Is there a motion to approve and award the Sillsby Road Park bid to, to RJ Platten?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Councilman Weisman, seconded by Councilwoman Cameron. Any discussion on this motion? If there is no further discussion, Mr. McConville, will you take the roll? Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mr. Weissman.
Aye.
Mr. Sims.
Aye.
Mrs. Partee.
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
Okay. Next item is item P, motion to approve expenditure for the ongoing services of Mandacam video to, Mandacam to video-record city council meetings. You'll see that the camera is here. We've been video recording meetings this year. I do have a junior intern who I've given the assignment to with respect to moving us along on the next phase of how we would handle videography in-house. But in the meantime, we previously moved for a budget for Mandacam video, and we are at its end. If we were to use Mandacam through the end of the calendar year, the estimate would be $12,500 to do that. I would ask that we approve that, or at least some portion of that, so that we can continue to have videography until we have a more permanent solution in place. Mrs. Weiss.
Thanks. Have you given the intern some kind of deadline on when his research should be done?
Well, I've asked him to check back in with me later this week.
So the $12,000 would be additional?
Additional, yes.
Okay, so I've moved to approve...
Twelve-five. It would be twelve-five.
Okay, so I, I moved to approve an expenditure of $12,500 for, for the ongoing services of Mandacam to video-record our city council meetings.
Okay, very good. We have a motion for twelve-five. Is there a second? That's by Mr. Sims, for the record.
Mrs. Cameron, I'll second.
Okay, second by Mrs. Cameron. Any discussion? Okay, if there is none, Mr. McConville, will you call the roll? Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mr. Weissman.
Aye.
Mr. Sims.
Aye.
Mrs. Partee.
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
Motion passes. No further business before us, so we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, I have a, I, I have a motion, but before I make a motion to adjourn, I just would like to publicly thank the city council for its outpouring of support upon the loss of my wife, for the home visitations, for the donations, and, you know, just for the expressions. And so I, for the resolution, for everything that the city and the council did, I greatly appreciated it, and I just wanted to make a statement of that, and I move for adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Sims.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn. We have a second motion by Mr. Sims, second by Mr. Rock. Before you take the vote, I'd like to thank all of you for being here today during our summer break for our special meeting. It, it's, thank you for allowing